Good evening and welcome to the City of Towalton City Council Meeting for September 23rd, 2024. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Hillier.
All right, please stand with me, place your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and we will make the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, literate and universal.
Thank you.
All right, very peppy.
Well, you know, I'm worried about them.
All right, that brings us to announcements. We have our first announcement is proclamation declaring October 10th, 2024 as Affordable Housing and Quality Child Care Day, and the City of Towalton and Councilor Brooks will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Towalton proclamation declaring October 10th, 2024 as Affordable Housing and Quality Child Care Day in the City of Towalton. Whereas access to affordable housing is a fundamental right essential to the stability and well-being of every individual and family, providing a foundation for a healthy and productive life. And whereas many residents in our community face significant challenges in securing and maintaining affordable housing, leading to instability and hardship. And whereas rapid rehousing programs and other housing support initiatives such as safe parking programs are critical in assisting low-income residents to find and maintain stable housing. And whereas quality childcare is essential for supporting working families, promoting economic stability, and fostering a thriving community, finding affordable, quality, and inclusive childcare remains a significant challenge for many families, impacting their ability to work and maintain economic stability. And whereas affordable housing and quality childcare are critical components of a healthy, stable, and thriving community, ensuring all families have the opportunity to succeed and contribute. And whereas, community support and effective policies are essential to address these challenges and provide the necessary resources and infrastructure to support low-income residents and working families. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Towalton, Morgan, that October 10th, 2024 is Affordable Housing and Quality Child Care Day. Together, we can build a stronger, more compassionate community where everyone has a safe and stable place to call home, and where every child has access to nurturing and enriching environments. Introduced and adopted this 23rd day of September 2024.
You're coming up with Rebecca? Okay, welcome Rebecca. Betsy, you coming up too?
No, I'm kidding.
Okay.
I'm paparazzi.
Welcome Rebecca.
I'm Rebecca Morgan. I want to thank you, Mayor and Council, for reading the proclamation and for your commitment to addressing the critical issues of affordable housing and childcare in our community. I hope you don't mind, I wrote this down so that I made sure that I spoke clearly and was organized with my thoughts. But by bringing these matters to the forefront, we are taking a crucial step toward ensuring that every family has access to safe, affordable housing and quality childcare. Two years ago, my family faced homelessness for a second time since COVID, spending 30 days in a campground and motels while waiting for placement in a family shelter. We were connected to the rapid rehousing program, which helped us secure an apartment in Towalton. Determined to build connections in the community, I became a volunteer with Community Emergency Response Team, and I joined the IDEA Committee. I also established a home daycare business. I had very few resources, but found that there was a real need for childcare in our community. So I drew on my experience running a home daycare in California to set up one here. A year later, with the help of ERCO and Central Cultural, two nonprofit organizations in Washington County that believed in my vision and supported my startup costs, I became a registered home daycare provider and am proud to be self-sufficient. Because of what my family has been through, it's important to me to support other families who are struggling. Through my daycare, I provide affordable, accessible childcare to families in need, including those receiving employment-related daycare ERDC subsidies. Additionally, I engage in outreach to connect families with special services, ensuring those who need support have access to it. I am committed to creating an inclusive environment where every family, regardless of their background or culture, feels valued and empowered to thrive. With 30% of Towalton's residents severely rent burden, affordable childcare is crucial alongside affordable housing options. In fact, childcare is the second-largest expense for families with young children, and costs now even exceed rent in many U.S. cities. My experience has shown me firsthand how essential affordable housing and childcare are to the stability and success of families. I hope that this proclamation not only raises awareness, but also leads to actionable steps. I encourage the council to continue working with local organizations, advocates, and families to implement policies that will provide relief and support to those who need it. Thank you again for your time and attention to this important matter. I'd also like to extend my gratitude to everyone involved with IDEA Committee, as it was through our work together that I found the inspiration to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for the community, and that's, you know, if you have the means to find daycare, to find actual daycare providers, is the other big challenge.
Yes, exactly.
And, you know, you doing it for the community and being in this community is terrific. Very much applaud what you've done. It's tremendous.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you for taking care of our children in the community.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
You're good.
I just want to say, I remember when you came to the interview for the IDEA Committee, and I just want to say thank you, and I'm really happy to see you in person, because we were in a little tiny virtual thing.
Yes, thank you.
But yeah, it makes me proud, and it makes just a testament of that we're in the right direction with a lot of our goals here. But thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much.
So you get to receive the proclamation on behalf of the IDEA Committee.
Great, that's great.
Sure.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Come on up, all front.
All right, ready? Okay, 50 more. Let's see, down to 20. All right, I think we got it. I am, that's what I was doing!
Thank you Rebecca. All right, we have a new employee introduction, a new court clerk, Paige Singer. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Courtney Camer. I'm the Court Administrator. And it's my pleasure to introduce our newest member of the Finance Department, Paige Singer. She started with us on September 3rd, and as a court clerk, she will be creating new files and assisting our folks that receive citations. When she's not at work, she enjoys all outdoor activities, spending time with her husband and her two dogs. Her background is she came to us from the city of Salem, where she worked in the municipal court and the police department. So she has a lot of great experience. She's jumped right in, doing a great job, and we're really happy to have her. So thank you for joining me and welcoming her.
You're welcome. Anything you'd like to say? How's Towalton so much better than Salem?
No, just, I mean, thank you for letting me be a part of this community, and to give back and serve. And yeah, it's been great. I love small towns, so thank you.
Do you live here in town, or are you staying in Salem, or?
I'm from Sherwood, actually.
Oh, Sherwood, all right.
Yes, but I live in Hubbard currently.
Okay, not that bad of a commute.
It's not too bad, no.
All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining the team. I know the court staff's pretty busy with working with folks, and sometimes you get some people who are very unhappy, and you guys are terrific at dealing with the public and making, you know, a very difficult situation sometimes, you know, making it a lot better, and being courteous, and goes a long way.
That's our goal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
All right, that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in Zoom, I'll do them first, and then anybody in person in the room will go next. Do we have anyone in Zoom, Nicole?
Nope.
Nope? All right, anyone in person who would like to address the council tonight?
Except me, nope.
Nope. All right, that was quick. All right, that brings us to consent. Yep. These are items considered routine. They were adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like it pulled from the consent agenda and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the agenda consists of five items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5808-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract extension for street sweeping operations with Great Western Sweeping. Item three, consideration of resolution 5809-24, awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Pace Engineers, Inc. for Seuss Law Greenway Stormwater Rehab Engineering and Construction Management. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5810-24, awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with OTAC, Inc. for Nyberg Creek Stormwater Improvements Engineering Services. And finally, item number five, consideration of resolution number 5811-24, awarding fiscal year 2024, 2025 outside agency grant funds to provide services to the Towalton community. Would any member of the council like an item removed from the agenda, the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports, summer program recap, and fall preview. Our dynamic duo coming up here. I asked about props and costumes. I mean, that one year, you hit it out of the ballpark, and...
And I want you to know that I do not have a quarterly financial report scheduled after this presentation.
Well, good evening.
Welcome Julie and Sarah. Good to see you both.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Buevenek and Council. I am Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager.
Sarah Jessaduson, Public Services Manager at the library.
And, you know, we know the goal is to be out of council meetings by, what is it, 10:00 PM, so we'll just make sure that we're done before that.
All right.
Well, we're just really happy to take you down this hall of mirrors. There we go. That looks a little better. And we're just here to tell you all about the great stuff that has happened in our city over the course of the summer.
Yes. So we had our summer reading program. I have a small update. We actually had 2,432 readers participate in summer reading, so when we had to put this together, didn't quite have all our numbers completed. I was going to name them all?
We have time.
We have time. Of those, a magical sounding 777 people completed over 2,000 reading logs, so over 2 million minutes of reading in Towalton this year. We had 154 programs with over 8,000 attendees, and our circulation was up about 9% over last summer. So all the things we love about summer reading really, really went well. This picture in particular had two of our, well, three of our fantastic summer reading teens, actually, and they were having a bit of fun with our camera during one of our Science on the Plaza programs.
I would also like to point out that the subject of that photo, her name is Cosi. She's also on the YAC, and she's also a member of the Park Advisory Committee, so she is a volunteering superstar.
Yes.
And she's also, yeah, she truly is a volunteering superstar.
And she's still with us, and Nestor in the back is also quite the volunteer.
Next.
Okay, so more of what happened at the library, and some of it happened outside of the library as well. We did our storytimes in the park, traveling around the city, offering a storytime for all ages at different parks during the summer, so it was really fun to get out in the community that way as well. We had a lot of making programs. You see one of our teen tiny terrariums. We love alliteration. And we are very well-known for music. We had the Willamette Valley Chamber Music Festival back for another year. We're looking forward to another year with them after this. It'll be their 10th year and our 5th with them. So fantastic. Next. I have so much power. So Viva Towalton came back to Towalton this year. We actually took the event back to Towalton Community Park so that we could expand and bring more people to this event. So it was absolutely fantastic. It was quite a warm day, if those of you who were there might remember. But that really didn't slow us down at all. We had about 2,000 to 2,500 people over the course of the day. We had four different performances. We had 25 different vendor booths and nine sponsors. And I think the highlight for almost everybody was the horses. I, at one point, was busy helping a different performer, and I look over, and there was a horse sitting like a dog, and I didn't know they did that. So that was really, really cool, and it was just something that you don't get to experience every day, and it was wonderful to be able to bring our community together. So that was a lot of fun. And I'll take the next slide, please. And I'll just keep talking. Whenever you're ready for me to stop, you can just tell me. So summer camp, again, was, you know, a really, really successful summer. We've been doing summer camps now in Towalton for long enough that I have pictures of kids when they were in kindergarten, and they are now staff. So that's really, it's actually kind of fun to go back in the archives and find their little baby pictures. So we have kids who have grown up in this program and find that it's just really such an important part of our community. And we have, you know, kids that come back year after year, some that wish they could come back year after year, but we sometimes get a little full, as you maybe have heard. We had 432 kids in our first through sixth grade program. That was our maximum. And then in our seventh through 10th teen adventure camp, we had 81 teens. Again, that was our max. And we're just really happy to be able to be in the park and provide that important service for our community, and hope that someday we'll be able to do more. It's been a great program and a great summer. And next slide.
Next.
We also have, so we have concerts in the library. We also have concerts out in the parks. And we did concerts at the lake. We did two concerts at Community Park, and we did a concert at Fallady. And we had, so four of those were our Friday night concerts. We also did two lunchtime concerts over at the lake. We had about 4,000 people over the course of the summer. Lot of fun. This photograph from the very last concert was almost a rainout. It was a complete downpour at about 3:00 PM, and luckily it cleared up, and it was a gorgeous night, and people were not scared off. So that was a phew moment, but it was a lot of fun. And we always enjoy having, bringing that music to Towalton. And next slide, please. So, again, we talked about a couple of our library volunteers, but we really rely on them in the summertime. We had 37 teen volunteers with us, teen and tweens, providing over 1,000 hours of their time this summer, helping us with programs, helping us get the word out about summer reading, making sure people were engaged. Pretty much every single person who walked in the building got the, hey, have you signed up for summer reading yet? And keeping track of that program as well. We have additional program support from other volunteers as well. And then, of course, the big programs like the Lender Dash and Viva Towals, and also rely on a lot of volunteer hands. So it was pretty successful in engagement and community support for the really great events that we get to put on. And we hope also that it's a lot of fun for the volunteers, and that they will keep coming back, because we really love to have them at our events. And next slide. And so the parks also had several volunteer programs, the Team Towalton, corporate and group volunteers, and Eagle Scouts all contributed quite a bit of hours. Those Eagle Scouts, 100 hours each, that's amazing. And so we've already had Hug a Tree. We are doing more tree stuff as a tree city with Put Down Roots in early November. And then we've got the Street Litter Blitz just before Thanksgiving. Next slide, please. All right, and it's not just the library and the volunteer and park and recreation department. The Towalton Police Department also has some really great community events in the summer. So National Night Out, there were 15 neighborhood events, which was a really great turnout. I think a lot of you were out, some of you were out at those as well. And then the Towalton Police Heroes Summer Camp. At one point, I did know what heroes stood for. I don't know if, I could make it up, but there were 183 youth in grade six through nine. That has become just such a popular program and a really great way to connect our police department with our community, and have kids view our police as helpers and somebody that's important to look up to and to work with. And so we really appreciate having those things happen in our community. And we also really appreciate our police department being out at our events and joining us in those big community events. Next slide, please. Still me. Wantita Pole Center. So part of the Parks and Recreation Department, we have the Wantita Pole Center for active older adults. They have fitness, enrichment, travel, and wellness programs. Their trip programs have been really, really popular. They drove 557 miles. I don't know if that's one-way or round-trip. I'm going to assume round-trip for the, over on the summertime, day and overnight trips. There were 208 hours of fitness classes, and then 3,531 attendees across those 369 programs over the course of the summer. So we've got a really active bunch of older adults. I encourage any of you to go and sign up for a program. You only have to be 21 to attend any of those programs, so you do not have to be an older adult. You just need to be an adult adult. So there's a lot of really fun things that are happening, and we get to a future slide. Sarah will tell you about some of the fall programs that are coming up. Next slide, please. So some of our things coming up for the fall, we have the woman with the headphones on and laptop is a musician who's actually made recordings out of an old-growth forest in eastern Oregon, and she's taken those field recordings and made compositions with them. So she's presenting them at the library this weekend. We have our Halloween Dancearama coming up, and we're hoping to see some folks, if you're interested, in basically seeing the cutest event we do all year. It's a couple of hundred kids in costumes, and we give out non-candy treats, but they're jumping anyway. It's very, very fun. And the book fairy shows up. It's really a good time. We have an Aztec dance trip coming also in late October, on the 25th, to help towards celebrating Dia de los Muertos. We had a storyteller last week as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. And then as we roll into November, it's Dinoember, and all kinds of dinosaur things. But before that happens, I heard we like our pumpkins small.
No, we like them big, giant, in fact.
At the library, we like them shrunken. We're going to have the shrunken regatta again.
I take your small pumpkin, and I raise you an enormous pumpkin.
Okay, you squashed me.
Oh, we did not practice that, I just want to point out. That was 100%.
That's all you know we're professional.
Okay, next slide. So the Pole Center, oh, that's still you.
That is me. That is still me. And they have a lot of popular programs that are filling up. So Phantom of the Rails, as well as more traditional offerings like the Veterans Breakfast coming up on November 8th.
And the original goat yoga, yeah. I don't really know how you can focus while goats are running around, because that's kind of fun, but it is quite a...
I believe they are the small ones that might climb on you.
I think they do. I'm pretty sure they stand on you.
Yeah. I don't even know of a goat pose in yoga, so this is very curious.
Yes. Well, I think the thing that I see every time we kind of look back at our summer, or any time period, is the, we feel there's something for almost anybody. And if there's not, we're open to new suggestions. So, you know, there's, you know, between goat yoga and recordings from old-growth forests to concerts to, I mean, there's just about anything. So I really appreciate that we have such a great diversity of programs, and appreciate the support that we get from our community to do that.
Yes.
Which brings me to our very last couple of slides. The, yes, we did squash it. The West Coast Giant Pumpkin Regatta returns to Towalton on Sunday, October 20th, just a little less than a month from now. Totally fine. We got that covered. No, it's going to be great. We've got, you know, 15, 20,000 people will converge on the Lake of the Commons for the ridiculously large pumpkin boat races. We have also, next slide, the night before, the little preview, oh, I'm sorry, other events that are happening on the 20th. Got ahead myself there. We, of course, have the Giant Pumpkin Races. There's the 5K Regatta Run that happens in the morning. Free family entertainment, clown shows, dancing witches, pirates, all sorts of good things happening around every corner. We've got the costume contests for kids. We've got crafts, food. The admission is free, as are most activities. So you can come and bring your family and not have to spend a whole bucketload of money to have a bucketload of fun. Anyway, that was terrible. It is such a great event, and I thank you, Councilor Brooks, for displaying the poster. The poster is designed by our Towalton resident and Towalton High School art teacher. Her name is Brenna White. She's been doing those posters for us since the very, very beginning, and so we're really happy to have her be a part of that. She'll have a booth at the regatta as well. And next slide, the preview to the Pumpkin Regatta Festival is the Pumpkins and Pints Event that is on Saturday, October 9th, at Sikkman Brewing, down here, right down the road on Herman. This is where the Terminator Giant Pumpkin Wayoff occurs, and this is from noon until 5:00 on Saturday, October 19th. If you want to see the pumpkins up close and personal, this is the place to do it. Not only do they weigh off the giant pumpkins, it's the Pacific Giant Vegetable Growers Association. They also have enormous tomatoes. They have enormous watermelons. They have enormous things called long beans that are like 12, 15 feet long. It really is quite a spectacle. And then, of course, there's the Sikkman Pizza and Beer, so it's a really fun event. You do not have to be 21 or older to attend. You can be any age, and it is a lot of fun to see those big, big pumpkins. So with that, of course, you all are invited, and all of your friends, and I think many of you will be there in one capacity or another already. So we're looking forward to seeing you all, and thank you again for all of your support throughout the year.
Any questions or comments for Sarah and Julie? Councilor Hillier?
Thank you. I always look forward to your reports, so thank you for being so thorough and counting the hours. It's hard to quantify fun and involvement in a community, and you really do that and make it enjoyable to listen to. And I just want to say that in a world where it's so incredibly important for us each to find connectivity, and for our youth especially, to have that trusted adult, the things that you do in our community are second to none, and changing lives even when we don't see it. And so I just want to thank you for the attention to detail, the hours and hours that you put into every, whether it's the shrunken regatta, the big regatta, and everything in between. I just thank you because I see the difference in people's lives, and I really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
And we all get, you know, all the comments, praise on behalf of the work you do. All my neighbors always rave...
All my neighbors always rave of all the events and the creative things you come up with in the library and the Parks Department. So as Councilwoman Hillier said, kudos to you guys because you do a fantastic job. And you never hear people complaining about it, as you can see, because your summer programs fill up as quick as anything. So there's magic there that people love to, you know, participate in.
Councilwoman Brooks?
I want to say thank you too, and I'm kind of fascinated by the goat yoga. Might have to go check it out just because...
I think there's a couple spots left.
Okay. And then, and also the little terrariums are neat. And I, I remember last year a little bit about the tiny pumpkins. Can you explain again?
Sure. We started this when we couldn't gather 15,000 people for 1,500-pound pumpkin races. We got, we assembled little kits with little palm-sized pumpkins and some tempera paint, and people could pick up the kits and return with a decorated pumpkin. They were free to use whatever they wanted. So we've had some really creative, wonderful pumpkins come, and they wind up in a tableau on top of our new books at the library. We had one appear as a shiny glittery apple. We had one show up as a ghost with a lot of holes. If you, if you remember the very beloved It's the Great Pumpkin Charlie Brown, and one of the kids makes himself a ghost costume, but it's got way too many holes. That's who showed up. We get a lot of book characters, pop culture characters. Really, really fun to see what, what our community comes up with. So, and some of the, sometimes it's the three-year-old who grabs the paints, and it's abstract expressionism at its best.
Thank you. And I, do you also accept gourds, or is all just pumpkin?
We have had people bring in, that's how you finally get rid of that last zucchini, right? Additional gourds, but we...
I have these gourds show up in my compost pile that are just crazy, so it's kind of interesting. And my other question is, it's different. It's about the library itself. I'm curious if there are resources for people that are voting that don't speak English or read English.
We are getting some voters' pamphlets from, from the county, and there's an additional organization that's providing pamphlets for us. I believe they are bilingual. I apologize for not having that, the name of that group up on top, on top of mind at the moment.
Okay, but there's going to be resources at the library for people.
We are expecting those soon.
Okay.
They'll arrive at about the same time that ballots do.
Yeah.
We also are running a campaign on registering to vote, which links to the state's website, which has all the information in multiple languages.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, that'll be available on the city's social media accounts.
Oh, great. Okay, super. And yeah, don't forget to register by the 15th of October. And then I had one more. Oh, one of my favorites in this whole area is going to the Portland Book Festival. And I was just curi, this year, the gentleman who wrote The Overstory is going to be one of the main speakers, which he is now like the expert on trees. In this new book, he's going to be the expert on oceans, I believe. So I'm just curious, for people that are going to that, do you also have the authors that are coming and collaborate at all with that program?
We don't have a connection directly with that program. Library people always sort of pay attention to what's going on there. Because it is in Portland, Monloma County Library kind of plays a bigger role with that. We occasionally get requests for authors, but the level of author who people want to come in here is a little more than we can support, frankly.
Oh, no, no. I meant the books that are going to be featured and authors are going to be featured for the Portland Book Festival.
Yes, we always pay attention to the authors who are coming around. I know Andy DeFranco has a kid's book coming out as well on voting, in fact. So we always pay attention, those, those books that are going to be in, you know, in the popular mind with that, we always pay attention to those and make sure we have a supply.
I appreciate it. And the reading numbers are fantastic, and I just looked at the numbers that Jeri Ann had sent over, and it's, it's good because we're just right at average with our state. And so these 2,000 book readers, 777, you know, those help our numbers a lot. So I just appreciate you helping our, our whole community engage better. Thanks.
All right, Councilwoman Riss?
No, go ahead. Well, I was going to say, three of us are on the Advisory Appointments Committee, and one of the questions we ask is what people like about Tuolotin, and it's always the sense of community and the parks. I mean, almost to a T. So, and I think you guys are a big part of that sense of community because you make it very fun, and these events are great. So I wanted to thank you very much. And then I have to ask, I'm pushing to winter, but is there going to be a holiday lights parade?
There will be the lights parade, yes.
The signs are opening up.
Are they? Oh, yes, yeah. We put out, we put out seasonal, well, twice a year, we switch out those banners. But yes, the light prays will be returning first weekend in December.
Might have to buy a generator this year.
Thank you.
I'm also curious if all the pumpkin paddlers are going to raise their hand that are on council this year.
We have a few.
So come out and watch.
That's right, yes. And as a former pumpkin paddler who has lived to tell a tale, it's a good ab workout, so be ready.
Councilwoman Riss?
Oh, just a few questions for the public and myself. Just a few questions for the public and myself. So I'm looking at the flyer. It doesn't have time, a timeframe or a timeline, or when, how long this event would be. Would you be, can you let us know what time, how long?
Yes, it's from 10 until 4 on the 20th.
10 to 4. And then my other question has to do with volunteer opportunities. You say you have volunteers that help with the summer activities. When do you start recruiting volunteers for that?
So for the teen and tween volunteering, they actually apply starting in March and April, and then we interview them. Like it's, for some of them, it's the first time they've had an interview that feels like a job interview. Because they do have a certain amount of training they have to do, they have a minimum amount of hours that they have to do. So we, we treat it like it's a job for them in terms of how they get there. They have to tell us about themselves and really demonstrate interest in being here.
And how do they find out about the volunteer opportunities?
We open that up on our website and post about it.
On the library?
On the library's site, yeah.
Website.
Or you can just go to tuolotinorgan.gov/volunteer, and all the volunteer opportunities are right there.
Okay. Well, yeah, I had just questions about, you have camps for first to sixth grade, and then I think it was like till 10th grade. So I was wondering, what are the other teens that are in the senior or junior year doing? So those are the kids that can volunteer, right?
Right. We have our Junior Recreation Leader Program, and a lot of the kids, once they sort of age out of the day camps, then transition into that sort of volunteer junior leader position. And those, we start recruiting usually in February with applications due by May.
Okay, thank you. And they contact the same website or the city website?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's your cycle.
I have a quick question about the folks that don't get into the camps. Do you refer them to Team Tuolotin? Does Team Tuolotin fill up? I'm sure that's something that my son participated in, and, I mean, to this day, he still finds value in the things that he did in Team Tuolotin and still talks about it. So I think it's a valuable program as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, we refer to Team Tuolotin. We've referred to Great Camp, which also fills up. We refer to library programs. And of course, we have a nice-looking waitlist, and sometimes people just sit there and wait and hope, and sometimes they get a phone call, so.
Actually, thank you. So earlier in the year, we talked about, or you talked about opening it up to Tuolotin residents first. How did that go?
It were, I mean, it worked great. We had, well, I don't know that we had anybody who was not a resident until later in the year when I started working my way down a waitlist. So it was, it was all Tuolotin residents unless we got some waitlist openings. So, thank you very much.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Sarah and Julie.
Thank you.
I think your numbers, I think your numbers were low on the regatta. I think it's been way more than 15,000. Last couple of years, it's been way more than that.
Usually they got two hours and 20 minutes to go.
Yeah, we still have time.
Right. Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So Heroes is helping educate responsible, outstanding, everyday students. I can see why you can't remember that.
They should stay with Heroes.
Yeah.
No, I'm around.
That, items removed from consent agenda, we had none. Any council communications? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second to adjourn for this evening. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Good evening, and thank you for watching tonight.